What's the next plan for the management?
Not June, that's June.
June, excuse me, not June. But, what you've got before the hearing is June's. Everybody here? Okay, so. We need to do June.
Thank you.
Okay. So the first thing is, we still have two public hearings.
Um, did we have enough time to read the minutes? I just sent them.
Okay.
Okay.
No.
Alright, we'll do it next time.
Let me go again.
Gary, right, what we.
I can say, he reading one, what?
Okay. Okay, so, first public hearing is SSD management. Wait, anybody here for SSD management court?
That person that.
Oh yeah, okay. And on the public hearings, tell them publicly about it.
So, SSD management is renovating the existing jet bank facility. Uh, located in front of the shelter fire department. We added two, uh, form of a gas fueling station, convenient story. For third time, uh, back on the planning board, we, uh, per rest, listened to comments and concerns. And reacted, uh, with their updated plans. Uh, we did get two variations for the project, which, um, have both been approved for setbacks. And we're like. After, we're type of like herbal. From the framework.
Right, public, uh, will you come? Oh, okay. We did add, uh, the lighting, the fire department scenario, yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait till our.
Okay.
Okay, the public, public, how long? Public hearing is closed. Okay, now the second one is.
No, we're closing both.
So you're closing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the next public hearing is Bayes Yakov High School. Anybody here? Okay. Listen, right.
So, we can buy a shop tool over here, we can make, or anybody else where it is. There are four people to cemetery right here. There's right here, water phone, product, construction, another, see, for those right here. Um, what he's looking to do is produce for the home board building in the back of the school. Um, we didn't figure the driveway, taking driveway out of the apartment, make it all work. That's landscaping. Hyrants in the existing, uh, connections that are kind of water sewer. It's prepared with, uh, you know, I think the school's gonna operate it, and we accessorize the school. Okay.
You probably have anything, sorry, on this?
Yeah, there's a handle, dude.
Nope, yep.
Give me one question more. Gary.
Go ahead, Gary. You gotta unmute.
Great, my name is Gary Kautcher. I have a simple question, I'm not clear, where is Bayes Yakov High, High School, um, located? It says here, it's, um, five, four, seven, eight, State Route fifty-two Fallsburg. I looked it up online, it says, two forty-two Brickman Road in Fallsburg. And then someplace else says, uh, eighty-four Laurel Road. So where, where is it located? And is it a high school or a grade school?
This particular school is a high school, I believe those other addresses are others.
Eighty-four, the Lawrence School, two forty-three, is the old, is the. Route forty.
Yeah, this property is right on, on forty-two.
Back to the cemetery. On Route forty-two.
Was built about three years ago. Right.
Okay, so this is, just to be clear, this is a high school, it's not the, there's also a, a, a day school on Route forty-two that says Bayes Yakov. But this is a high school on Route forty-two, built three years ago. Um, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Well, good. Okay, anybody else?
No.
Okay. We leave in this open or?
Closing, yep. Or said close it.
Close it?
Yeah. Did you not read your notes?
I don't wanna read it. Okay, whatever, I feel, right, whatever you said. Okay, the old business. We had SSD management court. Request special side party, to the part existing business at the point. Okay, so. Uh, we have a letter from the fire department. And it's fine, they want to hold the chain, but it's not a closed town, that's, that's.
Okay. Again, that's the person.
No, yeah.
It's a chain length fence with the privacy slats.
Oh, there, there's, okay, chain length fence. Okay, now, alright, now, the other thing I have to hear. That they're reacting to, uh, protect lead agency. For this project. A plan. Don't they do that? Well, I think that.
No, we did that, didn't we?
I think it's a receiver because, A, it's reusable existing structure, and B. Um, it's an expansion of a non-residential structure that.
We already did this, we did that in the last meeting. Yeah.
That's.
We did the motion for lead agency on the last meeting.
That's for, that's for solar.
That's for solar power.
Yeah.
The solar power, the one that's not coming tonight.
Oh, oh. You didn't get no, oh, okay, alright, so. We're not ready, right?
No, we are.
No, you're ready.
Yeah.
Are we waiting for anything?
No, I cannot take this to what our entity's been, so again, I'm just talking, triple C hearing. Um, since we last met, um, I have my notes scribbled on paper and we fulfilled all those requests. Um, a few of them, cursing was to schedule a public hearing, which, um, we needed to do. Um, there were questions on. Anchor, uh, queuing when they're filling the fuel tanks. Um, we've illustrated that in the latest set of financial, there is greater than twenty feet, a difference, what I think, or, but. Between that and the parking stall, um, we have a parking stall, and typically, like every other. Person that comes in here, we're delivery, but before the business is open. That's what they say, but you, we all know in reality that it might not be, um, before the business is open, so we wanted to show you that. There's adequate distance to do that, to do the park parts and tankers. Um, we've since relocated the car history dispenser over to the main fuel knowledge. Um, that was one thing. Um, and there was a question during the last meeting, obviously regarding this screening, um, obviously we can work with the fire district. We, two things we did with them, we relocated our dumpster enclosure. To the easement area where the, sort of access road. To the main entrances, which we're taking that online during this use of the property, or this. For this function, the gas station, um, we are putting a privacy fence embedded in the ground with foundations. Um, and the other portion of it. In lieu of screening between the back property, there are, we agreed with them to put up a chain length fence. With slats, like as you said, so four foot high. With the slats that give visibility over it, so keep nuisance traffic from going back and forth. And any debris that gets blowing around, say you have a medevac helicopter, it'll mitigate that from, you know, causing air issues up in the landing and parking lot.
Okay. So.
And so what I'm saying, we've worked with Aiden, we've done, uh, provided them, you know, obviously what we needed after all, and the plants that we provide, uh. For the, the twelve plants that. So I, I have a few things, I didn't, um, I didn't get these out before the meeting, um, the first one is lighting. Um, you guys, I didn't see a lighting plan. I think, you're the only, there's no whole lighting proposal right now, just canopy lighting, which I have some photometrics, um, which. Unfortunately, they're not mapped on a full site plan, my photometric showing, by the way, these are downlights. That are not, they don't, they don't cause light pollution, um, there's no, there's no mass lighting or full lighting. And.
Yeah, please, ruin your coot, because it's ruined if anybody falls. They won't be able to afford, they won't be able to.
So I have your plan, but then he was asking about site lighting, um, there is no site lighting proposed, other than the building mounted lights. As well as the canopy lights, and we do not expect them to, um, have any zero foot candles at the property.
If I ask a quick question about this, if the addition was under, uh, health support, are putting any tents as well? If it was for the gas facility or like this?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, would that kind of keep it to a number three? Another one of that's limited, that we gave Steve. About last month?
So the motion was for an unlisted action.
Yeah.
The agents. I mean, that's, that's more conservative approach, so, yeah, I think reasonably. It could probably go either way, but it's an unlisted action, that's.
Good.
Yeah, that's more conservative. Um. Uh, parking, so, um, you guys are proposing eleven, it requires eight, um. Is there a reason for the extra? I mean, just, can you just stop through the parking?
Yeah.
Um, because the existing site, um, had. Like it had more parking than, than with the lighting right now, probably get reused, um, the existing site that has made. Close to twenty spaces, um. With, with potential for traffic for good reason, why provide out of the space. Um, any additional space we could on that site, not adding new impermeable. To create these spaces, they just work with the layout, so it just makes sense for us to add those spaces for, um, congestion for employees or other things. But we're not increasing the impermeable to gain those spaces, but that's maybe where you're coming from on that? Well, I mean, there are two uses, right, so, that, and the. Gas station use requires, I think it was something like one, three, every two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. And then retail, and I'm trying to remember what retail is exactly, but, well, we're two different uses. So I just, I was, we had, you know, going with the greater, I think we're fine, in the worst case scenario.
Yeah, I, I'm a, I'm a believer in, when it comes to parking, it's more of only fair than less.
Depending, I mean, more is more impermeable surface, I mean, like you said.
Thirty there.
We usually agree with the fact that we don't, a lot of times, we don't need parking as some of the regulations that towns have. On that, you know, we'll build it if we need this sort of thing, but in this case, we didn't have to add any. Um, the, uh, it joins a, I think, parcel that's, uh, zone residential, right, so. Under the code, um, there's various buffering screening requirements for that, I think it's the, the east side. So there's a six foot high opaque with fence that's required, and there's a twenty foot buffer as well, that probably should be added to the site plan. I mean, you're not doing anything over there, so.
Right, there, there is an existing fence there now, probably.
Okay, is it six feet and opaque?
I think it's six feet, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's definitely wood, on the side, that's at the old, what I, but it's hardly filled president.
It's, I'm just going by the code, yeah, yeah.
What was, what was the setback?
Is it an and?
It's twenty feet.
Okay, we, you have the twenty feet and. It's an and for the screen best?
Yes, yeah, there are two different, um, standards, uh. Three ten dot, uh, dash five, uh, ten D. And then three ten dash four point three F.
And, and then the condition really hadn't changed, probably that's why it never came up, because. It existed, and so did the fence. We'll, we'll take a look at that, however, I view the defense in place presently, and we do have the space, so. You guys have any things we call up there?
I guess what I'm thinking is at least showing the twenty feet, uh, permanent vegetated buffer on that. Or just to say that if they come back in the future, that area is not that embellished, right?
Yeah. You know, again, we, we had, provided all of that by actual part. Sounds, code, and we could go to the ZBA and, and that would be appropriate, really, um, areas where we did not meet those, so, that's gonna review, right? Where the parents, that was gave.
Yeah, but this is under section three ten, four, three F?
Yep.
Yeah. That, I mean, that's, that's verbatim in the, you're hearing, or the area, aren't you? Okay, I didn't, I haven't seen the area. The last thing is the dumpster enclosure, there's standards in, um, three ten dash four seven each. Must have three walls consisting of brick wall, rather than mixed use, or, or, uh, stop people with fence. And that from looking. That's, that was, uh, block, yeah.
I'll stop the example, keep right out of there. That's, that was, stopping everything, now.
We've been, have to stop this, that's, that's what I.
No, no.
Right.
No, we have an agreement, an agreement with the, with the project manager, because it's going in that right away, and they may want to turn that back to right away. Then we're gonna build the, uh, enclosure out of, uh, chain link post with privacy slats, would be to the green and, uh. With the green, with the green fuzzies in there, uh, alright, and, uh. There is a, uh, there is a six foot chain link fence across that property line, between our residential, I'm holding up on a Google image. Uh, so there is a six foot fence across that property line, again, it's. The needs to be slatted at some point or something.
Yeah, I mean, the intent. Right, like need the intent with that, yeah.
Why do we have to do it? Get that, or is.
Put a plaque to lock it in.
Why, why, where you can go, okay, later on, anywhere, three hundred from now.
You're doing it for the rest of the.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So the fence is already existing there, you might as well just.
I guess we're fine with that. And that's on east property.
Correct, yeah.
And just, just summarizing the, the fencing and privacy along the connection with the fire district's, uh, property. As well as our, our dumpster enclosure. And slats on the existing fence.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
The, the, what is the last thing, the area, um. Are, do you, you do have an easement with the fire department for the dumpster enclosure?
It's in process.
It's in process, so that would be a condition approval, it could be, I don't know, I'm trying to. Um. So, the, the, no, we, we do have an eas, yes, there is an existing, our, our deed is tied to an easement.
For ingress acres.
Not for the dumpster.
I don't know how to strip the.
So, but we don't want, we don't want to sacrifice that egress in the future, um, if a doctor's office wanted to open. You know, so that's why we just didn't tear it and close it permanently, um, because that's, comes within all your property, so. When the fire district sold it to the bank, I guess, you know, that was, that had some value to it, to have that additional egress, so we don't want to forfeit that. And, um, but we're not gonna take advantage of it for this use of the site.
And then the improvements in that area on the site plan, really, is it just the dumpster? Asphalt removal or anything, it's.
I, um, I believe we're just trying to maximize dumpster enclosure. And so that traffic will not, you know, whether there's any bowlers that need to be added.
That, well, that's, that's kind of my thing, is it looks a little weird, right in the middle of, uh, the driveway, how's that kind of? People, are people there trying to drive around it?
And, and how it presents from the other side. Um, again, you know, I, I think we need to work with the project to get that, because. Um, that is. That's a, well. Otherwise, you know, they would counter me, they bear a sense that we're not letting it go in, I think. Finish. You know, I haven't been in, right, discussion with, with commissioner, or, was it the commissioner, um. We're, you know, going to discuss whatever he's done. But it is our reason, we have that easement, we are putting a barrier in place, which is for functionality, the things you said. So people aren't confused, we, we can try to augment that signage and refining or what have you, that.
Or, or bowlers on your property.
You know, you know, I, you know, I, you know, that'd be a condition to be working, but.
Have you, do you think the fire department can, 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 or have you?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, right, so that'd be a condition of approval, yeah, ideally, we've already seen that, but, yeah.
We're, we're not amending.
I think there's two different reasons why, I want to hold up new rules.
I don't know how that's described, described as a easement, you know, but.
Who can do it?
And if there's anything administratively, we need to do that for them. I think both parties are happy with that.
Okay, we move to a second. Yeah, um. I, those were, those were my comments, as long as you guys wrote me the. You know, okay, so. So let's do the, uh, the most thing. Move. Okay, all is good. Okay.
Pending Keystone Review.
It's conditional.
Oh, go ahead.
Now, it's all hanging in, and, um. Yeah, frozen, and they're happy with everything, but I know. There's just, if you mind, I, so nothing on the site, so. After some time, so that. You know, I'm, I'm gonna fall over, no, that'll be, it's always in the condition, it's a final site.
Yeah, you want to run through the conditions, so.
Yeah.
Um. You know, not verbatim, but, um. Uh, submission of, I, I think probably the lighting plan, just so that we can, or make that part of the site plan approval. Um. Slats, uh, privacy slats to be added to the existing six foot high chain link fence along the eastern property line. Um, calling out on the site plan that there's a twenty foot wide. Buffer along that entire property line that needs to be maintained for. Pursuant to. Section three ten dash four point three F.
Isn't that true with every buffer on the site? Why do we have to?
It's because it's residential and non-residential, that's the issue. Um, you've got our business district adjoining animal residential district. And our non-residential.
Right, and that's, that's what we given, I just don't know why we need to.
Well, it just needs to be reflected on the site. That's, because otherwise, if we don't have it on there, then. We live in it, well.
Would you like to know it in a certain way? Like forever, you know.
You know, if, you could say something like, I mean, we can work out the note.
Okay.
But I think something here.
I mean, the other one is this.
The permanent vegetated buffer. That's what it's worth. Um, three ten, four, three, that. And then, I guess, submission of a copy of the existing easement. Um, subject to planning board attorney review. And then, um. An approval, and. Melissa, um, in terms of any new easements, if we, if upon review, it looks like that's not. The existing easement may not cover it, what's the best way to phrase that for, how about as a condition? If, if we need to have a new easement put together? You know, how about a letter, sorry, how about a letter? Like, uh, letter permissions? That have to be erected from the letter book? We, we do that with, uh. You know. Like a license or something? Like, uh.
Then if you sell.
Right, that's the. One, yeah.
Yeah.
We can have it discussed. Well, and, and so submission of a copy of the. Existing easement, subject to town attorney review. Um, and, uh. Amendment, as the case may be, and as directed by the town attorney, for the planning board attorney. Uh, relative to the proposed dumpster enclosure, or something like that. Would not with that, so that goes with the land. I think that's, I think that's it. It's subject to.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we're all, we are, I think, so. Yeah, so I, I come up with a.
So the secret, so you, you concerned, unless it actually affect you, so did we do a determination yet?
We'll do that, yeah.
Yeah. We make that, if that, and we make that, of course, it's what they've built.
Through that, or, but, uh. So, and, that, where is that dash on, on file with that?
I don't know. I only have my notes in my phone.
Well, that's. Well, it's, that's for Adam to prepare resolution.
Yeah.
Final move. So what we may want to do is. We may want to go back, well. Um. Would it be appropriate to be, to walk through that now, and if you feel it was prepared or submitted?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a part two or a part three put together. Um. I mean, I can, if the board wants to table that, I could probably put something together. Quickly, and then we just have to go back to the beginning, um.
How long, how long? I'm.
He's gonna get it right now.
Well, then.
But then, uh.
No, no, I don't. Wait, I guess the question. What, we have an attorney, okay? Yeah, what, what's, what's the, what's the recommend, the attorney, on the situation?
Oh, I think it's a good, it's a good, I'll try to, I'll try to, but then the board will have to read it, yes, no.
Yeah.
Think on it, talk about it.
So you're, so you're, the court will be a little too.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, why don't we actually, while we're, why don't we go through the part two real quick, and then I can write up the part three, and maybe move on to. So, um. We'll just run through these, these eleven questions, this is, you guys are familiar with the part two, it's a short one. So, will the proposed action create a material conflict with about this name, and result in regulations, by, you know, the hands, which no one knows. Um, will the proposed action result in a change in use? Excuse me, in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? And I think if, you know, there will be a slight increase, but not, not significant, right? Um. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing? There's an existing gas station right down the road. So, it was a retail use before. Um, small increase in pervia, impermeable, you know, the lighting plan, or. Uh, it's not in the physical environment, there you are. Uh, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to the existing level of traffic, or affect existing infrastructure, mass transit, biking, walking? So the last, the multi-motor piece, there's no. There are no sidewalks. With no sidewalks, um, there's no shared use path that would be impacted. There's no. They're not touching nor the New York State right of way other than to install the access tribe. And then the prior, the prior use was a retail use. Um, you know, gas stations typically. Pick up, uh, pass by traffic as opposed to generate new trips, you know, convenience store, maybe. Adds a few trips, but I, you know, compared to the prior retail use, it's it's fairly similar. You know. So there might be a a small impact because, you know, you've got gas, you know, gas pumps in addition to a a C store, but. I I, you know. We're not. It's not a large impact, for sure. Um, it's already a developed site. Um, well, the proposed action caused an increase in the use of energy. And fails to incorporate recently available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities. Yeah, I mean, it's going to make New York State building good and fast. Um. Will the proposed action act existing aid? Public private water supplies? So. The prior reuse, again, was there's a small expansion, maybe for, the expansion is going to be needed for. Solar space or just more refuel, refuel the base, but as far as the water goes. Um, it's still the same amount, it's still no more than. Yeah, I can't think that it the addition was like four hundred square feet, so it's. You know, twenty. Twenty-five percent increase, um. But you're not adding that, so when they're physically in service there. There'll be, you know, grabbing goes up. Not, uh, I'm not, I'm not avoiding them because they may want to. Yeah, um, so it's a. Um, so, you know, it should be substantially similar, maybe a s- a small increase based on food service. Uh, in water use. Does that make sense to? Um. And then B, uh, public, private wastewater treatment utility, so. I think to Melissa's point, um, I mean, what goes in goes out, so we might need a small increase in. Uh, flow, but the constituent parts of that flow, um, if there's. Uh, do you are? Have you looked at the need for a restructure there?
With no, you know, restaurant operation, who said?
And and I think so, the other piece to that is. Oh, oh, is it? Okay. All right, so, and in any event, there's. Uh, they'll need to comply with the town sewer use. So no small impact on that one. Um, historic archaeological or aesthetic resources, um, I I. It the. There's, this site wasn't flagged for. Archaeological or eligible sites, um, historic resources, so aesthetic resource, I mean, substantially similar to what's. Yeah, well, yeah. With, uh, with a canopy. Similar to what's. Down the street. And it's in keeping with the zoning. Um, adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water, groundwater, air quality. So, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, it's an existing. Reuse, um. And there were no. Matt's wetlands or, I mean, it's a. Yeah, so. No impact, um. Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? So there's two existing. Basin's on the site. And you you guys looked at the drainage. There there's a small, there will be a small addition of incurious. Surface on the site, and you guys picked that up in your.
The only thing is the roof leaders or what the gutters are doing for the overhang.
For the canopy. And that's going to go to cat basin.
I, we haven't seen, we haven't, that's one of our comments asking what's, where that's tied in.
And, um, that's all going to the state right away, so DOT is going to have to review and approve.
And just as a footnote, as a conversation, uh, DOT has reviewed it. And it's not a perm thirty three commercial, it's just a perm thirty three, so. Shortcuts a lot of the steps and our latest communication with regional office was. Um, no comments at this time, basically waiting for faster afterwards insurance. We're going to close up.
So DOT is good with it and the challenge here. Even as reviewer, you know, from a drainage standpoint, the board can be comfortable, even with the small, the changes that. You know, if there will be no response impact to drainage, um, they've got erosion set control plan as well for construction groups. And did you want to add the DOT permit as a condition?
That's it.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So don't, you guys wouldn't be, no response on that time. Hazard to environmental resources or human health, um. You know, they're going to be. Regulated by, uh, DEC under the petroleum bulk storage, so there's a whole. Series of requirements that they're going to have to attend to with that. And the, there's no remediation sites. You know, flagged within the. Areas, so I think those would be too big. Terms, otherwise it's just retail. On an existing site. So there will be no response, small impact, right? Um, okay. Let me, let me just all throw together the, um. Part three, and then we can. Come back through it. And I'll I'll give it, I'll give it a T word.
You're gonna go around negatives. Alright, so, uh, last hour before the morning, I just had a sketch plan. And then, you, uh, you know, immediately, then I committed a, a plan set, but since then, I've made substantial. Uh, adjustments and revisions to it, so that. You guys understand that the latest plan? Um. We did an instance last week, we did an absolute. Absolute power survey. Of the developed site. We haven't done that prior. Um. We added landscaping. Um. We graded it, you know, building engineering, there's a couple. Find her details, um, I need to work on, one of which is related plan. I did receive Adam's letter, I revised the plan to address the majority of that. Um. As far as the stormwater going, they've added some. Catch basins and drainage. To handle the driveway runoff and the roof runoff. And to kind of replace what we had previously. Um, when I designed the flip of the bioretention, so it's pretty more cool. Uh, where it told me there might be some further development, so I included some additional incurious in those definitions. But I have to go back and make sure I included it up. So there may be some, some slight modifications that my, that I might have to make there. Uh, but I'll issue a supplemental to Keystone to take care of that.
I've used the plan you sent for three thirty nine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we're not doing it, we're not doing.
No, I know. Yeah, so I submitted it in thirty nine. In March. And they wanted a different detail, so I sent it to them again today. So we'll hop back to the next one, so I'm gonna work on. Going to try to fire it out.
Well, you have. That's not, that's not the drug.
Yeah. We we gave you some guy advice. Yeah, you're, we want to run last.
Is that their email, Gary?
Yeah, I can turn it out.
So, let me see if we got a copy of your proposal.
I don't see a copy here, but they'll they'll bring it in. It's down over the hill. Okay. It was down over the hill, so it can be five sources.
Mike, send that to me so I can send it to the.
Jordan.
Jordan.
Yeah, uh, A A, is that the place? Taxi. Okay, so, uh, I don't know how it works, they have, uh. Is there like a parent day at this place at all? Family come to see their kids? I mean, you're, you're like, uh, the, I don't know what you call it. Like, uh, always just stay on your day. But I'm saying, it's kind of going to come and visit them once, uh, like, they have camp day, if you do anything like that a year. You don't, you're not probably. And, uh, this is. Well, it would be too much fun there.
New York Times.
Anybody else?
Now that we have this.
Okay, so that's it for that. Am I, how is that?
I'm gonna keep mine.
Okay, next up. Why is there a bungalow? Bro, set up, stay. It's quite a tight plan to do, maybe a way to fix the bungalows. Couple of wires through the back that they can go in. Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. General, yes, it has. This is, this came as. As with enforcement action, which is going to be solved. However, I I was brought the. Mr. John Truck is our engineer. Um, we've been working, my clients have been working together with with, uh, Greg at the town. Resolve any of the outstanding issues and bring everything in. Um, develop the site plan, travel. Do the roadway, do the ability. Essentially, this is an existing, uh, bunch of bungalows. Were not used for a bunch of years when this, when my client purchased property. They renovated into a bungalows. We have, uh, clearly property. Well, we're working. Oh, no, in all honesty, they submitted. But he hadn't ever committed sure, he wanted everything that. Was that? No, yeah, just. Uh, this has been pending since, I apologize, I I came into this for late, I know it's been pending since August, so I'm sure the public carries without. Yeah.
Yeah.
In any event, this is.
Back buildings that weren't being used. Did I do that yet?
I know that.
Yeah, so the the, I was through those buildings, uh. Several years ago, under the prior, this 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 place has been before, I've bought it before for for a different, they were going to do like a wedding venue. So I did walk through all those units in the back. They were in, they they needed. Definitely needed paint, siding, roofing, uh. I was told they were in worse condition, but when I, when I had seen them, they were structurally sound, they were just needed like cosmetic freshening up. Yeah, they were, they weren't, uh. They weren't falling down, that was a couple of years ago when I inspected them, they were, they were still decent structures, they just needed some freshening up, but, uh. Some of them were like little two-story structures with little lofts and some were singles, they're all, they're all double, I think, bungalows, but they use the front ones. Uh. Yes, so the, uh, the determination, ZDA determination said that the accessory structure in the back is permitted under. Our, our non-conforming bungalow colonies to be issued without a variance, it was a accessory building to, to the, uh, to the. So. Yes. So we don't need a variance for the building. All, all we have to do now is. Get all the site elements. Correct. Give review of the project, uh. And of course, they're obtaining the proper permits and stuff like that. Uh, there was a discussion. Years ago about the. Sewer wasn't sufficient to to handle the extra buildings in the back. So they had taken and ran a sewer line for the unit into a holding tank. It wasn't discharging on the ground, but they they had it to a holding tank. Uh, I was submitted then a. A set of plans from an engineer showing how they were going to get the sewer to a connection story on their property. The towns wanted them to connect to this for years already, it's, there's a stub on their property for the sewer. They already have neared water. From the top of the town. Uh, so I have a full engineer plan on the connecting sewer from the units to the stub in the street.
Yeah, we need to engage them.
So we, there is a full set of plans, we're in the building for the sewer hookup. I can just tell you that growing up around that, well, this thing. The the set there has always been an issue. Yeah, the problem is, my clients. Committed to fix it, there's a lot of legwork here, I think that's why no one ever wants to. Kind of get that line in. This work is being done, started Monday, so they. Bring you, they engage the contractor, the problem goes away, there's no more. There won't be any problems then. You use properly hook up the. It's part of it all, you know. When we got involved, part of it was just to get everything that they complied, and that's what we're trying to do. Um, I would like to, you know. We're happy to obviously. Right, you know, start escrow, like to start engaging with, uh. From the lower end and. Keystone and and try and get this to.
Uh, I don't know if they use, if they were using, they were using sort of it, they were using part of it. The whole, the whole camp was you being used prior to, well, the whole camp, the main house, the main house and the front row of units. Were being used continuously all, they changed ownership, the, the new owners. The new owners were using it and then they did the the sprucing up, whatever you want to call them, the renovations of the bungalows in the back and built the building in the back. Uh. And we s- we, uh. We went up there, we had a call that there was buses going up there, and that's why we, we went up there to investigate it, there was, there were monthly tour buses going up into the property, so, uh.
Buses didn't get into the box.
They were. Or maybe they were on the street, I got, I got. Okay.
With the amount of buildings. How many bedrooms do they have, and what is the maximum? Capacity of people that can be on the property?
I can certainly get you. Yeah, it's a hard describe.
You know.
So the building, or the planning board did ask for a walkthrough when they were here the first time, you guys never did that, so you might want to. Yeah.
The engineer.
Yeah, you should engage them.
But we expected that.
Yeah, and our attorney. We, we actually have to have a public hearing on this.
Yeah.
You want to do a motion to engage?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to engage the.
Yeah, so the, the place is a, a camp, not a camp, it's a bungalow house. So we just want to make sure that that is going to be not used as a camp, it's a bungalow house. Or we need to.
It's a seasonal.
Okay.
All right, so, yeah, how many bedrooms do you have?
Provide sewer calculations.
I'm trying to figure out this volume up there, because. The area where they have all the homes. It's not that big of an area, I know there's a winter home.
Yep.
Yeah. We need to remember one. Is, when I remember this, that there was. A one-way road coming in and and going out, it was a circular, circular road. The problem is. They're all their drainers, like, and I was running down the road and it's flooding to main road. So that needs to be addressed. And a couple of things is. Is they need to have more parking and places. Number one, for a fire truck to go up there, and what's to do with the bus? Are you gonna, are, is a.
In all, in all due respect to the board, my understanding. I'm not aware of any. And my conversation. No, no. But yes, I, my my client is making very quick being, I'm like very quick forward. They will, you know, they understand that there was a problem when they parked buses there, just for a short period of time while I was holding. They'll, they want to do, one of the things is they. Prepare an area off the roadway that buses can pull into. We understand.
There's no area where they can pull, pull off with the buses. They need to, they need to fix the parking. And with the turn, number one, you need access for a fire truck to get out there. And it can't be done, the road, the road has to be. If they're only going to use one road, that road has. For. Two cars, two cars or two vehicles passed on up. And you need the radius, the deal is. Where, where the road goes out. You cannot bring a forty-four bus in there without widening out the road like fifty feet, at least fifty feet wide. To make the turn in and turn out. And that's, that's.
Who, who owns that road?
It's the pound of four. But it it needs to be addressed, it needs to be rolled into, and I would say the engineer. Or the highway department has to be involved with that.
I expect that our engineer will work with Keystone. Yes. No, that's why we're here.
That's why we're here. This is where it starts.
There, there is an enforcement action.
There, yes, there's enforcement, there's, we're, we're just, we're, we're, we're holding the, we're holding the court actions and the fines until we get this resolved.
We're not going away here.
It's not going away, it's just being.
Somebody said. Don't build it first and then somebody has to forgive us. Okay? We have laws in this town. You build a building, you get a permit and you build a building. You don't build a building first and then comes the, the planning board saying, oh, I made a mistake, I didn't know, I told you, excuse my French, okay? But this is wrong, somebody's got to stop this nonsense.
Gary, I I don't disagree with you, we're here to bring into compliance, there is an enforcement action. That will go through the court system, we're not that. Rightfully, the court action is not going to proceed until everything's done correct, so I understand. I'm not.
This is not the first case. Not going to be the second case, and it's not going to be the third case.
And the problem will be the last case.
Well, it's got to stop.
We're, we're trying to get it. Yeah, so, is there an amount for the escrow?
Uh, fifteen hundred for each escrows, so I need two checks. Yep. You can drop them to me. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
No, we don't, we understand this, we're here.
Did you guys want to do the?
We'll get that out this week. Do you want us to wait until we got a meeting with? Payton and me?
I don't know.
There may be some changes. Before the next meeting, we'll get into the fire department at that time, so let's, hopefully we'll have.
And it's in the district, correct?
Yes.
Are you going to connect and tie in with water as soon?
So we have like half us, they were Randy ready.
So Randy hits it, okay.
So, yeah, I have the whole, the whole plan with the sewer. And uh, they were going to start installing, they had a lot of work to jack and I did the lines going, and then we were going to discuss the connection, Randy, Randy's aware of it. I asked if we could, if we could start the work on the sewer.
And that's going to be a winter water. Not the, not the water over the ground. It's not going to be summer water, it's going to be winter water.
Unless they're not using it seasonally.
It's going to be buried.
You can ask, who's here from uh? Will it be seasonally, seasonally used?
Yeah, it's not a year up. Only the one building.
So what's the deal with? If there is a fire, you know. Are they going to maintain the, the smoldering mobile so we can get out there if the fire? I don't think that's our problem, because you can't make them follow pathways. So you know, that's the insurance company.
Certainly, I will certainly present the concerns.
There, there is a provision in the town's code, uh, for. I, I believe there's some plan. Must be cleared within ten days. So I'll, I'll make a note of it.
Anyway, I will absolutely present that concern to the client. Thank you very much, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get started.
All right, that guy knew this. People, please. We can't record the meeting for everybody's walk.
Thank you.
All right, anyway, I'll do that again, Redstone. Glen Wild Road, going twenty-eight, three acres. We want to build a tractor trailer in Fair South. And a twenty-seven thousand five hundred foot, where?
Do you have anything on the job on there, you're presenting the project, Redstone? I was invited to go to introduce this project, as the chairman said, uh, it's a six thousand square feet, so shop. Uh, eBay, plus eight hundred square yards, nevermind. And it's a plant that that town is looking for. It's on a nine-point eight, three-day, uh, wide road, it's in the industrial district, from Ipsos Shoes, uh, subject to uh. But we turned this into a town road and feature units, which is. On site, well, so we started stepping to the whole of site. Uh, as I said, last time, we had planned, uh, working with. And uh. Uh, that was. For the, for the new town, so. I, I, I committed to. Have a chance to do that, extensive uh, letter. All right, now we have four, uh, also four, we can tell plans, including all ready, fully applying for the seven. Uh, for the landscape. We are still waiting for, for that. And the script is in four comments, so it's uh, clear, it will be submitted for a due. So for tonight, we're asking the board to consider, uh, spending a lot of money for next month. And uh, will submit it to the county for two thousand and ninety. Uh, I believe the board is going to need to do with it.
Kind of a jump down there. Excellent. I know where it's going.
And the property next year, there's uh, folks. It's in the middle of the, the industrial.
There's a, there's the, the back part, is that wet in the back?
There's, there's a weather here. Right, they can't do any of the weather, but not the, why not? We're glad that it's supposed to be a small disturbance, it's one point, one square feet disturbance.
Okay, whatever, so I have everything, this.
No, no, we're doing that.
Okay, we need a motion to become a new agency. Classification, the action throughout our regulations, classifieds, and this direction. I, I had one question. Um, where there. There was a house right next to it. Um, right next to the property. Is that industrial property where the house is?
I, you know, there's an.
I'm trying to, trying to figure out this. Is that residential?
So there's one house, there's a house. There's a house right there. That's owned by a facility, he's a, he's a over-the-road truck driver. And then there's the, there's a multi-residence property to the left of that. The one we have a problem with all the campers and everything over there and. Yeah. Don't ask.
No, that's what I'm, I'm just. To see that you're going to put a shop. And it's going to be next to the house. What, what is the, you know. What's the good neighbor policy? About running a shop next to a house?
Well, well, we showed some landscape above there.
Yeah, we're showing it. Yeah, but if, if you look at. The distance, you know, you look at the difference by the scale. Uh, how far the shop is from the, the house. I don't know, what's it?
Uh, it's uh. It's about seventy feet under coast per, under the wall shop.
The house.
Yes.
So those lands are his own residential, it would be subject to those same. The way it's addressed in the code is that landscape buffer and. Uh, opaque fencing, just like we just saw.
You got a, you got a shop, you got a shop and you got to figure that out.
I, I didn't, I, I can flip over all the pages and say how, like, do you tell everything in four pages? I certainly do that. At least when the last, the last state class did show that.
Where's the entrance? Uh, the entrance to the garage? No, the entrance to the building in the garage. Where's the doors? Okay. So no doors facing the, the residential property? Okay.
Those two entrances will have to be approved by the county as well.
So what's that F D S?
Uh, it's, that's a safety system.
Way over there. Way over here. He has a little homecoming, serves the use of your captain's house, and it's way over here.
I don't know how good that well is going to be on that.
It's very minimal, what it is. So it's not, it's not a residential view, so it's very minimal.
Maybe the junkyard's been leaking a lot of oil from the ground there for a long time ago.
Isn't that the first thing?
No, I know, it's been junkyard for, for many, many, many years.
Well, and uh, with, with the rest, uh, I believe the insurance and channels, uh, would like to move forward and get a, obviously, you didn't know. Thank you.
Relative to the adjacent residents, what about, um, pre-trad, that kind of equipment, everybody wants them. On, on that side, like air pressure or whatever.
Can we get a, can we get a? With everything?
Elevation or?
I mean, people, it's really to learn even more about the planning of stations.
I think what I'm trying to get at, Joe, is having, um.
Usually for any of them.
Um, a full blown, or a truck shop.
Usually for the warehouses and other projects. In the conditions, they have to make the town's noise, or if there's any concerns. That they re, they do a proposal for decibels at the property lines and stuff like that in the review.
If, if, really, they make that kind of investment. Why can't they make? Couple of hundred dollar investment and give us an elevation, why don't you get to the project?
Sure, uh, we're definitely working on that elevation, I, I just want. A couple of announced elevations, that, that was probably about twenty years ago.
All that they're willing, if they're willing to spend, uh. Multi-million dollars, whatever they want to build a project, they can spend the next. Three thousand dollars. Okay?
They know what they can try to.
I mean, the board, the board should know what they're going for. When we get, when we get the plans. We should get an elevation with the plan so we know what we're talking about. How many times I gotta say this?
You got it, man, you know. You're speaking a noise vibration tiles down there.
Gary, keep it down.
Okay, so the other, the other thing, um. There, there's a, an existing fifty foot wide uh right away and easement. That I think is existing. Um, Julie, your response says you would come on the board to review its notes um. Relative to the prior subdivision that may have created. Cause you, you say that your research indicates that there's no filed instruments except for.
Right, and you're sort of, they have done a sense research on that. Uh, we have a common plan map, so a plan map is.
They were.
I'm sure. There, I don't find these. It just doesn't find that's the bone of patience, you know, when they have it. We, we only had any issues uh. Okay, because I haven't anyone just the role.
So does it, I mean, it would make sense to extinguish that. Wait, it's not.
Uh, a quarter easement.
That's an example.
It doesn't exist. But it's not. It's not by the. Yeah, but it's not a hundred quarter easement. Technically, I believe, I mean, I got twelve or thirteen, but uh, I'm not.
Isn't it?
This, this, well, this only helps that uh, please. Uh, children are found now thirty foot wide. The threat would be that easements. Quite important's favorite. And there's not, there's no bracket of how you would call him since.
I, I, I just filed it a little bit. I'm gonna do why. Clarify all that. Let's file.
Yeah, I guess that's gonna be done on the final. Thank you, okay, so it, it's a. Yeah, some kind of problem. Yeah.
Okay, okay, we're going, okay, let's go back to the uh. S, S P, that. Yes, it's a lot, don't we?
You want, you want me to read through this? So the, this is just. You know, we didn't check any for uh, moderates large, but it's good, there were just a couple of things we talked about. Those could just document the board's reasoning, right, so. Um, I'll just read it for you. Uh, existing level of traffic will not be significantly different from prior due to the addition of gas pumps. Nice guy, as we view the uh, the project. So they know, they thought there was a potential impact too. Um. The project, we use existing water and sewer connections, and while gravitational, the service may create a small increase in flow, it will not be substantially different from the prior retail use. Restraps that needed will be installed in accordance with the town sewer use law. So it's on the water and sewer piece. There'll be a small increase in per view surface, but nice stop and town's engineer will do drainage plans. I'm gonna add um, temporary. Really incentive control. Measures. Will be installed. So that's on the drainage. And then the last thing, just on the. Um, the discussion about screening and everything, basically just says the project involves adequate suddening buffering to join the project, so. That's the, that's the reason, you know. Give this back to you. You're gonna ultimately, you'll need to sign that uh, one of yours.
Okay. Okay, so.
I was about, I haven't done that, you need a motion. So maybe just so procedureally. We had two, I'm, or I'm sorry. We had two votes, one on the special use permit, one on the site plan, but we didn't close seeker. So what's the? It'll, all right, okay, yeah, so no mandating or, yeah, okay, so we just need to redo the.
Okay, we need a motion. Second, second, second break. Motion. Okay, all the favor. Okay.
Are you better? Well, all right. Okay. Before we vote, that's all we decided.
Okay, that's the condition, I know.
Okay. Now, we're in a lot of the prime, and it's like, you want to hear it, so now, but. I hope, now we can pass the resolution by the side. For his uh, special, special.
Special part.
There's, yeah. Okay, so you need a motion to special form. Who wants to make a move? Second? For favor? Okay. Okay. All right, that's something pretty good.
We don't.
We might do the site plan too. And we could probably just reference the conditions we talked about, four plus. Uh, two nice dot two ball of the. They're working the, the right way.
Okay. You know, we have it, it's, if that thing works, that is recorded.
Yeah, right, right, so that. Okay, not to go back to.
All right. All right, good luck. Okay.
You got it, much.
Yeah.
Well, well, maybe, no. Okay, we didn't have a mobile. No, we just. I love this site.
I'm gonna.
Okay, we already got it there. So our net. So there's, well, there's one, one action you guys can take, and that's just clearing yourselves. That was the motion, the little uh. Deeper motion that you had in front of you before on. Uh, it's, you, you can take that step tonight, just to clear yourself, the agency. For secret purposes. Yeah, so there's. So we need a whole people, we need to. All of the. Three part soul. Yeah. Now, I don't wanna be here for that.
They don't.
No.
Just a procedural step.
About this buyer.
I'm sorry. Would you the question you asked? If you're looking to.
No, to, to assume the agency after pursuant to a.
You already set up with that. Yeah.
Okay, that's the effect of the agency. Nine. Second. Okay, okay, people, okay, bro. Okay, we got you, you see a lot of us. Okay, the next one. Sunny Iceberg Metro Plaza. Mark Shilly.
So, hold on, you have to unmute.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have to unmute Ralph Paragline and Amos Cone.
Okay, so my note here is the needs of building plan.
Oh, hold on, you want me to unmute all of them, Jacob?
Ralph, please, Amos is the developer owner and Ralph is the engineer.
Well. Um.
Amos Cone.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Okay, um, good evening, uh, we're here tonight, uh, we're on the agenda for an extension. Um. But as part of that application, in preparing for tonight, when we reviewed the file. Um, I guess the first question, or I'm not sure why the maps haven't been signed. Um. When we prepared for tonight, uh, everything's been submitted to the town. Uh, well over a year ago. Um. And we're just not sure why this hasn't been finally signed off. Uh, additionally. The last time Amos was in front of you. Uh, he did agree, even though he had already received the approval. From this board. Uh, after that, uh, he did agree to uh, be participating in the traffic impact. Analysis and cost benefit. And I've sent uh, an email to Dylan. Um, that he is uh, willing to pay. Immediately the escrow for the residential. Part of this development. For the traffic impact. Uh, he's being a good neighbor, good citizen, and. And acting in very good faith, because he had received the approval already, but even after that. Said he would participate. Um. We have a workshop next week for the sole issue of going through the impact fee for the commercial building. Because that number is almost twice as high as the residential. The commercial building was something that not only this board, when we were going through the approval process. But the town board was very interested in. And, you know, when they gave the uh, water extension. Um, they, you know, it was part and part based on, on him building the commercial space. Um, an office building, which is uh, you know, there's not a lot of office buildings being built in, in the town of Fallsburg. Uh, but we're gonna discuss that next week at, at the um, at the workshop, and hopefully we'll come to some resolution. But he's committed to, you know, to the, the amount that's been identified for the residential, which is sixty six some odd thousand dollars. Um. So. Before. We, we'd just like to focus in on, I, I just don't know why the, the board isn't authorized author to sign the maps. I, i- if, if uh, the town's engineer has any minor changes, I'm sure Ralph. Our engineer will agree with him. If it's anything major, we could discuss it at the workshop next week. Um. You know, I, I, I think at this point, given the fact that this project was approved over a year ago, seeker was done. He's broken, you know, he's, he's already done the land clearing. Uh, for the residential. He's seeking uh, not only to get the map signed, but he'd like the permit to clear. The commercial. Um, so that's, that's why we're in front of you tonight, hopefully we could clean up these couple of things, because. He, he's moving forward, but there's, there's, for some reason, we haven't finalized. Um, um, the map getting signed and getting the um, permit for the land clearing of the commercial.
Jacob, we'll have to find out about the maps, we're not sure um, if they were signed and just not given to you or. Where they're at.
Okay, okay, uh.
If, if. Go ahead.
It says needs building plan for commercial and bond for three away. Then it says. N O Y was filed without Keystone approval of the SWIP. Then it says capacity permit. That's, I don't know what any of that.
I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't hear half of that.
Okay, it says uh. N O Y was filled without Keystone's approval of the SWIP. And capacity permit. So those are the things that I have here on the notes. That have to be handled. No, we're not the ones to, if somebody's gotta tell us.
Well, capacity permits were issued by the, by the uh. The, by the town. The sewer and water capacity permits were issued back in uh. I believe February of last year.
I think it was that they expired.
Oh, they expired.
And the uh, the SWIPs, if there's any minor corrections to the SWIPs that uh. Keystone would like, we, we did make corrections to the SWIP for the Petro Estates. Before filing the. N O Y, which were the comments that were provided from uh Keystone. Uh, if they have comments on the Metro Plaza SWIP. But, you know, we're happy to work with the uh, with Keystone to resolve them, it's not a. We have no issues with trying to resolve comments that they might have.
Okay, well, well, we usually.
But we haven't seen anything.
Few items. That's usually how we handle stuff. Why I really don't know what, what's happened in this case. Where? What uh? They don't have, you have anything on this project? Um.
I don't know, it's. This after this agreement, so you can do the extension. Um, and believe.
Well, I'm.
They have. I mean.
How would the authority, we, we grant them the six month extension while we work out. You got a few details in this? Okay. So. And there are, I, I went back and looked at the, what I had marked files from the prior approval resolution, it's like June of. Twenty twenty two. Sound about right? So there's the standard conditions. You know, um. And the site specific conditions, so the first one, this is site specific conditions prior to the chairman's signature. First one is the actual completed commercial building must physically look. And be designed substantially the same as provided renderings by J K R T R X. For the office building floor plans and elevations dated January four, twenty twenty two. And office building renderings dated November ten, twenty twenty one, and included here. Here in my reference. The second is because the board.
Wait, before you go on, before you go on for the second, that's just an architectural condition which we agreed with. And that's just, we have to build it consistent with the plan, so as you're going through each one, let's answer it, because. Our goal tonight is to try to close this, because it's, it's two years old, and, and I'm not understanding why the, the map's not signed, so. That one is easy, the first one you read. We're building the building pursuant to the plans that we showed this board, as you mentioned.
Yeah, why do I do all that? How much more land do you plan on sculpting over there? Because we, you saw all the trees out, it was supposed to be leaves, trees left on the property. Right now, all I'm looking at is a big open field. What happened there?
I, I, I didn't hear you, what, what was that one, I'm sorry?
See, I don't see any trees left there, I can see a big open field now. I thought we had a, already on plan that there would be some trees left in certain areas. Now I see everything is gone. So when they do the office building, I'd like to see some trees left there.
Yes, no, there's a lan, there's a landscaping plan we're gonna comply with, but in order to construct the buildings, there has to be clearing. So that, we got the clearing permit for the, for the residential, which was done. We're looking to get the clearing permit for the, for the office. And then whatever the landscaping plan that was approved by this board will comply with in terms of planting.
And the clea, the clearing that was performed was in accordance with the approved plans. Well. The plans that were submitted. That had, that we don't know if they're approved, but. The plans that were submitted and approved, yes, so. The plans, yes, you're right, the plans that were submitted and approved is what the limits of clearing have been.
We marked it all out pursuant, we marked everything out pursuant to the plan.
But it's definitely.
So Jacob, this is Greg from the building department. If, if you clear the, the commercial portion and then decide. Not to build it for years, we're gonna be looking at a half fast. The land, cut down lot, I mean, what's your intentions on timeframe for building this commercial phase of this development?
I'll, I'll let Amos answer that question.
Three months, six months.
Hey Greg, how are you?
All right.
Um. We are actually working with the bank, and, and part of the process for, for financing is to show that we are starting, we have started the residential. And we wanted immediately to move over to the commercial. If, if the town is looking for a certain timeframe, it's okay with us to wait. If you wanna have the bank give us first approval. But uh. It's like a, it's like a chicken and egg situation, we have to, we have to show progress. And we have to move forward, so it's not like uh.
Dan, the, the town doesn't wanna give full approvals on, on clear cutting a wooded. S- section of forest, if, if they're not gonna give you, if you're not ready to move forward with the building.
No, obviously, uh, the reason I wanna clear. Is because we wanna move forward, the reason they wanna clear is not just to clear.
Amos, Amos. When are you gonna start, I think the better way to clear, so the board is clear, when will you start moving dirt? To build the office after you clear?
As soon, as soon as, I'm, I'm working with the bank. As soon as the bank is, is authorizing the financing.
If you don't.
No, no, that's not what he said, he, he's, he's, he wants to build the commercial right after he clears, he's.
Jacob. Jacob, when I go to the bank for a month, I get approval for a job. That's all I need, I don't need to sculpt the land before I get a back row. I need approval. Showing that I got approval to build it. Once you have approval. You don't need to sculpt the land and all that before you get along. Once you have approval, you don't need to sculpt the land and all that before you get along. So I don't know where that comes from.
Amos, I think you got to explain to them the process that you're with because they're not comprehending. Build after you clear. That's their concern, that you clear and you don't build. So you need to answer that for them.
I I I want to explain the the process, the process with the bank is they first give you a preliminary approval. That preliminary approval. Is they relying on you to start the process. Once you start the process, then they'll move forward for a final approval.
Once you have approval from the board, that means you have approval. That doesn't mean you have to do anything else before you get along.
I'm sorry, what 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 was it? I'm sorry.
Why does it be on the wall?
We just have an issue with the land clearing permit because we don't have anything on file for this project. No plans, no building plans. So the 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 town stance on it is we don't want to end up with another cleared piece of property if there's no. No, nothing in the works to build there.
I'm, 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 first of all, it's the first time I now have the the clear understanding of the town concerned and I'm. I'm very much in compliance. I understand where the town come from and I also don't want to clear if I don't build. I'm not, I I it's okay with me not to start clearing, but as of now, I don't have anything in hand. To show the bank that we have some sort of approval. I don't have any permit. So if the town is telling me, I'm giving you a permit to start clearing only with if you start moving dirt within six months. I can understand it and I'll comply with it and I won't start clearing before we have some sort of approval to move there.
May- maybe, maybe the, maybe the um the approval, so that he could clear. We could keep in touch with the building department so that they're aware of his process with the bank. And how and how that's working hand in hand. It I, you know, I I I think it's a little different for a commercial loan. For for a commercial building this size, but I think he's being clear. He needs, he needs the ability to show the bank he has a permit to clear to move to the next step with them in their process.
And I'm committing not to clear, not to start clearing.
You got approval for, you got approval for this job. That's what you make them back. No, he's looking for a six month extent. I know what he's looking for.
This, the six month extension for the site plan approval is different than the permit to clear the property. That's what he, that's one of the things he needs for the bank.
Let's try to work some of this out in a work session.
Okay, okay.
That's fine. That's fine. That's a. That's fine.
But as long as the SWIP plan and everything else is approved, at least we know that we we did everything else.
Most the uh drawings for the plaza were submitted in uh the final drawings for the plaza site plans. Were submitted to uh Keystone back in early mid February, I believe.
Oh, we have the site plan. She's talking about building plans, so.
An architectural, you're talking about architectural and foundation plan. But that would, but that would be, that would be for the building department. That wouldn't, you you, the board, the board doesn't need that to sign the maps for site plan approval.
Hasn't issued the land disturbance permit because no building plans have been submitted for the lot.
Okay, that's fine. That we we, that's your process, which we agree and accept. What I'm saying that, that's separate from getting the map signed for for the site plan approval that was voted on two years ago.
I think they're signed and weren't distributed to you then.
That would be, okay, which is how we kind of started this, which would be great if the maps are signed.
Today's the first time I'm hearing that the maps weren't signed. So like, maybe you're hearing some things I'm not hearing.
I mean, I I. I do remember, Greg, I apologize, Greg, I do remember that we were requested to send our copies of the maps to Keystone's office. For both the estates and the uh plaza for signature, so. I do remember sending those maps out.
I'm gonna check in the morning in the office to see what's there.
If you need more prints, Hating, I'm happy to send them.
Uh, we can bring it over next week when we do the workshop too.
Right, right. So so the workshop will not only focus on the traffic impact fee for the commercial building. But we'll try to discuss more and come to a solution about getting the land clearing permit. If if we do come to a solution at the workshop, are we going to have to come back to the board for the board to make a motion or could the board do that tonight? Subject to working things out at the workshop.
If if the plan is approved, then we take it off the consign, then why, why is the plan where you're getting involved? The approval.
Their their approval expires on May ninth.
Right, that's why, that's the ba- that's the base reason we're in front of you tonight is to get an extension of that. But also to clear up getting the map signed and then the land clearing permit. Those are the, those were the three things.
I'll I'll entertain a motion for a six month extension subject to your, your meeting next week with the building department and. I'm getting the details worked out. And well, of course, you'll have to, you'll have to come back.
There's no changes. So we're not, yeah, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure we have the proper building moving forward before we shoot the air. I don't want, I don't want a little crossroad in the city, another forty acres gone.
We we understand. This is why, this is why we're still at the point.
Yeah, so, and so the um board meeting next, what's the date?
Next Thursday.
Yeah, we're we're in front of, we're work session the eighteen, next Thursday. First, uh Jen, is that one, what time?
Second Thursday, but this, he's talking about the work session that we have.
So I know, but if.
One fifteen, Ralph, one fifteen. Thank you on Thursday, okay. We'll bring, we'll bring, Hating, if you need me to bring plans, please let me know.
In a right direction, we're not going to allow those any clearing to happen. Your game across the project, correct? So the projects are approved. So if I would have just issued land clearing permits, then they would need the extension. So by you granting the extension tonight, giving this more time to work out with them to make sure we got all the plans and everything we need proper before they. To do start going.
And 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 if we, and if we have to come back in the May meeting or whenever. Uh, you know, to to address whatever the board needs in order to get everything signed and finished. We're obviously happy to do that, but we're just, like I said, we're just trying to get to the finish line here.
You brought up about the mortgage for the commercial building. Can you find out if they're gonna get that in the next thirty days?
Find out to get that when?
In the next thirty days, by the time we come back.
We're gonna, we're going to get more information about that so that the board is clear in terms of those issues. That's correct. I I. I don't know how much detail the board gets into the financing of other projects, but we'll make sure that we clarify things for the board.
I I think what we're trying to say is if, if, if there's no mortgage or no money and you clear the land. Then we're gonna be stuck with a with a open field.
We we understand it. We understand. We don't want to clear without a, without, we fully understand it.
We do, we do. We we understand the board doesn't want vacant land. We we understand a hundred percent that issue.
Com- commercial projects are very differ- different than residential. We have to, the the submission package. Has to, has to include some sort of approvals, some sort of permits. Even though if we're not using it, using it, we're not utilizing the permit, we need to, it's part of the submission.
We are here tonight. If I read this correctly, okay, for six month extension. That's it. Do we give them a six month extension? No, forget about it. We're here for a six month extension.
Our next meeting is the ninth.
It runs out, and so if it runs out, and I, it wouldn't run out, we could do it the next meeting if anybody's on that.
Right, right. We'll, we'll get a little bit more of the financing stuff to clarify that for the board.
Doesn't run out until our next meeting. I'm just saying, I don't, I don't have a problem with either. I'm just saying what technically runs out.
Next Thursday.
After you have the work session and you get some stuff like that, we'll talk to Greg. Then we'll uh, the next meeting will, will more than the extension.
In other words, you know, it's extension.
Okay, so the board is not granting the extension tonight uh because of what reason?
There's no need. It didn't run out yet.
Yeah, it it expires next month. Why, why wouldn't you vote tonight and avoid coming back next month? You need, you know, the the clearing permit, the the workshop, the reason we scheduled the workshop was to deal with the traffic issue. The the impact fee, which he didn't have to pay, but he agreed to pay after he was approved because he's trying to, he's trying to be a good citizen in the town. So we were, he's agreed to pay the residential, we want to discuss the commercial fee. And then the second issue was to discuss the land clearing and to go into more detail with that staff at the workshop. So I'm not understanding why you can't vote for the extension tonight.
With with subject, with subject to start construction within six months of finish of clearing. So so we're not asking you to, we're we committing not to start clearing unless we confident. That within six months, we're going to be able to start.
When, when, I have a question. When does the, when does the uh? The resolution, the current resolution approval. In May, yeah. So they want us to come back next month to the extension as opposed to granting it now, which I'm, I'm just not understanding. Yeah, but if it expires on May ninth, does that mean it's, I I I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just asking the technicality there. I I I, it it, we've received site plan approval, we did seeker, I'm not under, I'm not understanding why the board is not extending. I just.
Attorney said it will lapse.
And we can't let it lapse. That's the, that's the point. I I mean, in the past, in the past, I've come before this board a month before the extension expires in order to extend it.
And and it's okay to add a stipulation to that extension.
Somebody make the motion, somebody in a second. All in favor? Okay, motion's passed, there you go.
Right, thank, I thank the, I thank the board.
Thank you so much.
All you've done is extended the site plan approval. The the clearing and all those other details, we're going to work out in the workshop and we'll come back before the board. To discuss those, the aspects of building, the actual building.
I want, I want to say it on record. I have no intention clearing without building.
Amos, I I will, I will say they have, this board has had decades of developers telling them the same thing. So we need to give them a more specific plan, other than what you just said. Exactly, exactly. We need to give them a little more proof in the pudding because of the um behavior of past developers. They have a real concern about this. So we need to, we need to address their concern and we will. We will address the board's concern. Thank you, thank you.
I want to amend the previous approved site plan to change the renderings of the building.
Around a crown pole with the, all kinds of, uh, they did the colony, but. Right, right now, has every single section, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine, different kinds of siding, siding that it has, that kind of a, we were around one. Uh, this one that has this kind of doors, different holes, um, the core idea, this is like a mess of a plan. Then I sat in the new one, which was blue on, uh. Gordon, the architectural review board, does he have any input?
I sent that all to you.
And based on the input, I really have it fixed with the, with the.
Yes, Gordon was sending the new renderings that he gives our clients.
We have an issue with the, the, the fact that the blue color, it makes my mind very nice color, but it's the one of the. That went back to the colors that we had the original plan. But we just needed it consistently. Gordon added that we should have of the long, of long heater, um, roof path above the door. Added to have a brim, white brim, meaning both clean side to the building. The, we got the stairs, I think fourth floor on the stairs was the fifth one.
No, this is the new one. He took work recommendations.
Based on the nation, I'll put on the exact items, which is almost the same color that we had the previous. On the printout, basically, based on, came out a little with the colors, but that's why we, um, we noted the colors on and aside. Which colors exactly we're going to use in the building, which those colors are more or less the same. Downtown one, which we had the previous plan, but that's, you have a lot of rock stone, which makes it look very um.
No, no, they didn't change anything. It wasn't there.
In this case, okay.
The only other thing, I mean, this is not related to this, is that. The original plan showed connections to existing um services. And those were found to be inadequate. The pipe was broken and so they do have to submit a new plan. For us to review to, to replace those connections and they can't get the DOT work on it until. So they're not changing anything. There, at some point, they're going to have to dig up the road and connect to the lines.
That we have a combination of properties, we had two lines, one, a trap. And because you the, we can do one, one, open up that line, which is, you know, exactly what's going on, but. Um, we went into cameras, while we were doing excavation, rented cameras, twenty, twenty two degrees into the road. And we found the pipe to be collapsed before we want to connect to the tour. Um, that I'm working right now with. With engineering to see which options we have.
Until, well, they don't do it in the winter and so, but your original approval, you wouldn't see them cutting into the road. But they will have to do that.
Since you brought it up, I have a question to, to, it's, I guess, direct with the generic. Uh, are we allowed to happen if we get, by buying the next property? Or maybe you're going to give to the next property, right next, the, the, right next property, the pipe is six inch. And we have, or usually we buy the property, can we connect to, without going to the DOT?
You don't have to submit a sheet, you know, sketch.
Acceptable, or are you, should it be investment of the generic?
I don't know how the water sewer will put the metering and, if you tell them sewer.
Sewer doesn't have metering.
No, the water has.
No, the water will keep, the water will have, um, two options. We have a, we actually have, we have a, we have the, uh. Just, um, very little for six towns. But, um, I'm working with engineering to see if you can do the storage next, and storage for each unit in the building, that, that means that they won't have to use any, any, um, they only do the same, at the same time, their, their, their showers or something, or bathroom drive. They won't, and, uh, it's not only in other region, they have to.
I thought the new plan had a four inch line connecting to the main. And the water department wanted a contractor to be used to do the wet tap and so on for that.
I'm just asking you, Frank, since you brought it up, if the engineering plan, we, if we can resort to, if we can get something done by connecting through the neighbors' properties. And by then, my only issue is water, and we do this tank system, uh, on each unit. Would that be acceptable?
Submit it for us to review and discuss. With the attorney. Yeah, so we would, we would have to review that, and maybe that'd be a work session to set up.
The change of the, of the look of the building, so we don't end up with what we have in Woodbury.
You're right.
But we, we're, Woodbury's getting fixed. Approve the new render, if, if you guys are in agreement with this.
And we only got twelve percent on our computer left.
Thanks so much.
Uh, good evening, my name is Joel Cole, uh, presenting my entire, and Steve Baris, who are returning for the project. Uh, I'll just, uh, give it all we have, what they're, what they're doing, and then Steve will go into the other items to discuss. So this is a, uh, it's a ninety eight, and I think here is a piece of property, that falling to, uh, add a two story building, which can be as used as a dormitory and a first floor, uh, shoulder and a second floor. Uh, twenty five of forty classroom building, they're all black, and two more all sports at here, that's, that's why they are for, uh, to the property. And then, for them to make some changes to the existing colonize units, uh, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eight, which is now being used at dorms. Uh, will be integrated into staff units. Uh, twenty five, three, twenty five, will, will be integrated into the staff unit. And the existing show building, the show building, the building, or we do that at the right call, uh, anyway. Uh, those are basically what Mr. Cole. Uh, it's a goal of being the minimal staff, staff housing units, number of categories. And this is not for the summer, or probably for next summer, but they, they want to have, plans to have for this. Uh, to increase the, to maximize the activity for the, for the students from one to Asian to, uh.
So, just to be clear, this is a unit application, you abandoned the previous.
As, as, as in the, the letter practice dividing submitted, we withdraw the application for planning or design works.
Uh, when I was approached by Joel on the, uh, strategy, I really, because I couldn't, I figured out exactly what to do. Um, and I unravelled, I think I unravelled for you tonight. And to share with you what my analysis was and what my conclusions are, and why are you thinking that you do applications. So, the original application is actually misleading, it's miserable considering this is a secular camp, which it is not. This is a very religious, it's a very religious educational facility, that is what it is. And I went through memo of law document in peace law that deals with this issue. I'm not going to, I'll get as technical as you want, but it's to stay at thirty thousand feet. There is plenty of peace law going back, uh, these fifteen years. Most of it, by the way, has nothing to do with the Orthodox too. These are cases that are developed mostly in the context of churches and church uses. Uh, as to what are religious uses, and courts have uniformly held that religious use is an expansive concept, it is not a narrow place, it is not simply a place where you go and pray. There is quite a bit more to it that can be used in religious use. This, and religious education is core to that, as a matter of, whether it's Jewish education, Christian education, Catholic Protestant, big things, Bible camps, that through all religious uses. The idea is that the way this application was presented was as if it was a non-conforming camp. Therefore required a variance, the variance that was applied for was the wrong variance. It was an area variance, and if it was a non-conforming use, of course, had a use variance, so all of that was wrong. So I just think you said fair enough, you start over. So here we are asking for site plan approval for a religious use, which is a use that is allowed as a right from the act district where this property is. Alright, that's, that's the very basis. Now, I'm happy to go through with you, if you're curious about why it is that it's a religious use, what the case law is, and so forth, I'll go into as much detail, or no detail, depending upon what you want. So, if you have, you want me to get into that, I will, but I don't have, have to.
Well, if it's, if the zoning allows it. That's, that's basically all we're going with, it's never got a theory, it's not having zoning, you know, like.
So, that's why I said that, Joel will address that, or, 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 and all the rest of that. I wanted to come before you because of such this rather crazy history. Also, it's not very common that an applicant comes to you and mislabels their opponent. Something happens every day, so I wanted to make sure we were very clear on this from the get. Um, and the reason that I want to make sure we're on the same page is because why go down with the technical process if we're not on the same. So that's the reason you're coming here and that you're aware of all of that. Didn't reach out to Dylan, uh, he's on my agenda, too busy. You may want your own attorney to weigh in on this, a few minutes up to you guys.
You were on the previous.
Who, who makes the motion? I'll second, okay, okay, all in favor? Okay, so we have a wonderful, very important.
And the last point that I would make regarding this property, so that you will narrow your focus right onto the issue. And one of the things that I asked was, okay, this is religious issue. Well, one of the things that I asked was, okay, this is religious issue.